Good morning, everybody. Welcome, welcome visitors.
Good morning Chairman and the Commission. We have two items this morning and a possible third. Commissioner Cruz is going to review her Ghana trip. That's the first item. And then the second item is we have some correction boards appointments to make. And then Mike may or may not have some legislative stuff just depending on what the Commission wants to talk about there. We could either talk about that today or we can talk about it during the meeting tomorrow. So with that, we'll get started with Commissioner Cruz.
Good morning Commissioner.
Hi Chairman and other Commissioners. Are you guys ready to take a trip to Ghana?
Yeah.
I'm ready.
Is that rhetorical?
No.
Because I'm really not physically.
It's the truth.
Okay, well, thanks for your comments. I appreciate that. Okay, so here we go. We're going to discover Ghana. Ready? Okay. So, what does this say? Someone's sitting in the shade today because someone planted a tree long ago. The real voyage of discovery is seeing with new eyes the possibility of unfamiliar landscapes. How true is that, right? Because that's what this is all about. So, just to give a little context of where I went, this is a map of Africa. An interesting point that I'd really like to point out is that the capital of Ghana, Accra, falls almost directly in the center of the world. The prime meridian and the equator fall, as you can see, almost the center. Which was an interesting fact. The Accra, this is Accra map. Accra is the capital. That's where I flew into and where I spent the majority of my time. As you can see, it's right on the ocean. It's a beautiful place. There's a lot of things that can be discovered and be developed, but the majority of it is just incredible. Why Ghana? How did I get involved in this trip? How did I get involved in all of this that has been developing over the past six years, seven years? This is not just something that happened overnight. But how did I get involved? So last year, Levonta Williams came to me and asked me for the county commission to declare and have a proclamation for the Queen Mother, Paramount Queen Mother, Nana Applume II. Our commission unanimously agreed, voted, and declared July 24th, 2019, as Nana Applume II Day. So let's just think about that for a second. You come to the United States and someone, a county government declares a name in your honor, declares a day in your honor. What do you do? You take it back to your tribe, you take it back to your people, and you celebrate. That's exactly what they did. They invited all Commissioners. I received this letter to the right in my email. I believe that Commissioner Dennis received one as well. And we were all invited, and I decided to accept. I went to the chairman at the time, Commissioner Dennis, and I was kind of nervous about what would take place. Was this an appropriate thing? And under the direction of leadership at the time, it was agreed that it was okay to take this trip. So then I pursued getting my visa, getting my shots, traveling to Kansas City, six hours one morning to get a $330 shot right in my arm. I had seven shots that I had to get, so that was pretty interesting. But good thing I'm tough, right? So, I embarked on this journey of learning every single thing that I could, deciding where I was going to go, where I was going to stay. Thank you to Lisa and Carol for helping me with all of this. I could not have done this without you both. So just a couple of facts about the country of Ghana. And I'm not going to read these because this presentation will be, I will gladly share this presentation with everybody later, but this is just for your own personal knowledge. One thing I just want to point out is the people of Ghana speak English. Most of them speak two, three, four, five different languages. I met a man who speaks 15 different languages. He said, "Oh, well, my daughter's studying Spanish." And he said, "Hola, como estas?" I mean, it's crazy. These people are intelligent and smart. So, as we go through this trip, I'm just going to go day by day so that you guys know exactly who I met with and then what kind of outcomes will be presented from Ghana in translation to Wichita, Sedgwick County, state of Kansas. So bear with me. The first one that we went, the first day, we went to Narbida College and Hospital. This is a family-run establishment that started out of a need to provide basic medical treatment to the people of Timah. We traveled to Timah. It was about an hour drive. And we toured the hospital and we toured the school. So the college was actually established in 2004. These are the types of training that they have, nursing, laboratory tech. They offer a bachelor's and a master's degree. But one thing that they want to do is provide a PhD. And they don't currently have that. And so the students that go to their school, they have to leave. Most of them go to Cape Coast, some of them go to Europe, some of them leave this community. And the majority of those people that get to leave are males because the women have to take care of their children. So, we want to be able to provide and pair possibilities of our educational opportunities here in Wichita because we have PhD programs. So, let's talk about the hospital for just a second. They have a 100-bed capacity. They see 200 to 300 patients per day. They deliver 70 live births per month. They have a maternity ward. They also operate one of the few blood banks in the region. Most of the cases treated, I thought, were interesting. Deworming of children. Can you imagine having your children that you need to, right? See, I see it on your face. But they're treating basic human needs. We all want to be able to go to the doctor and get treated for things that we need. And this hospital is doing that in this community. The other thing I want to point out is they do 34 medical mission outreaches to villages in their communities. So, they're really doing outreach, they're doing a lot of community service, and they're fulfilling a need in their community, and they want to do more.
Pal Narbida became one of the sites that we visited when Carl Brewer initially went into Ghana. Narbida was one of the hospitals that we visited. They gave Carl Brewer an opportunity to speak at their graduation. When they returned the visit and came to Kansas, Narbida sent their officials to visit Wichita State University College of Health and Professions. And it was there that we began to talk about how they would want to partner and bring their students here to do a PhD in nurse practitioner. They have medical assistants, medical practitioners, but they do not have in Ghana an established PhD program in nurse practitioner. So this conversation has been going on and on and on over the years. And now we have shown up once again with the permission and with the guidance and support of the College of Health and Professions at Wichita State University to come back in and begin to do this work. They have committed to hosting a team from Wichita State University Health and Professions to come there and to talk about this partnership. They are also committed to sending their students here to get that PhD in nurse practitioner. So I just wanted to give you the background to what is actually happening. And some, almost every place that we went is a follow-up and a follow-through to some earlier commitments.
Thank you. This is Dr. Wakila Martinez. I should have introduced you, my sincere apologies. Because she was very instrumental in showing me and guiding me and just being the support system and the knowledge base. So I really appreciate, and I'm so sorry I didn't introduce you. But she's going to be chiming in throughout this whole thing because, like I said, you see where I started on the journey, right? I'm just, I'm a little bit into this, right? But there are so many people who are like waist, if not shoulders deep into this, and I'm just kind of at the ankles. So there's a lot going on. Okay, so the next part, so as she was talking about, this picture here is our equivalent to our WSU Tech Skills Facility, right? Have you guys been there? Have you been to our WSU Tech Skills Facility? They have the most high-tech equipment. They have the most up-to-date equipment, and this is the equipment that these folks are working on. So the possibility of getting old equipment that we are no longer using is a possibility. But also, the purpose for cross-training, study abroad programs, recruitment opportunities, tropical medicine is another thing that we could, medical missions. So the possibilities are endless. The educational opportunities are up there of the folks that we're going to be following up with later. This is their ambulance. While I was there, I saw a news report that they have just, that the country of Ghana has committed 307 ambulances for the entire country. One ambulance, Michael, are you paying attention to this? One ambulance, one ambulance is 87,000 people. So when we talk about Clearwater having an ambulance for 2,000 people, I just want to have, I want the comparison, I just wanted to make sure that you were talking, you were paying attention so that I could compare those two.
After this week I've had, I think that's a little rough.
I'm sorry. Michael. All I'm doing is asking you to pay attention to the ambulances. Okay. So moving on, this is Dr. Nah, who is the operator of the, he's the owner of the hospital, and Dr. Inyanko?
Inyanko.
Inyanko. And so I met with a couple of other folks. Dr. Raymond Price was having a conversation with a couple, talking about the things that he was doing there. And he mentioned looking for trade skills, particularly surgery. So he is actually there doing exactly what we're trying to do. In addition to Dr. Raymond Price, Mr. Zadin with the University of Delaware is also there. He is providing research opportunities, grants. So these folks, and I met him and Stuart, actually, the very last night. There weren't a lot of Americans there, so we kind of stood out. I particularly stood out. And so when I talked, people kind of looked at me funny. And so I went up to these two, and it was kind of great that we had a great conversation about hospitals, about health professions, those kinds of things. And it's just nice to know that we have partners in the United States that we could go to, to share experiences with. Day two is the Ministry of Aviation. This woman right here, her name is Christina. I handed her a little airplane that I had. I took a bunch of gifts along with me and gave her this airplane. But one of the goals of the Ministry of Aviation is to make Ghana the aviation hub of West African subregion. So, we weren't able to meet with the Ministry of Aviation, but we were able to meet with Christina, and we all know who kind of gets things done, right? So, anyway. So the top projects, and I would like to, I was shocked that we were able to receive the entire list of projects for the country of Ghana. Every single thing that they want to do over the next couple of years was given to us in a list. These, so there's a lot more than what's listed on here, but the aviation business development and strategic partnerships that we could partner with, one is a maintenance repair operation. So that's number one. We could establish a training and aviation school, and then a fixed-based operator. So I'm excited to share these and talk with our partners at Spirit and Tech Strong and any, I mean, we are the air capital, right? The connections are incredible. The opportunities are there. We just have to be willing to pay attention and look.
Let me add this. One of the things that came out in that meeting was a complete go for Wichita. As a facility, development, anything in aviation. When they discovered who we were and when we talked about aviation and its development in Kansas, and especially being the air capital of the world, eyes lit up. And that's when they brought out this information and said, "Actually, what you have just talked about, you will fulfill four of the areas that we are wanting to develop out. But here are other areas that you may be interested in because of the history that you have in aviation." So I really want you all to look at this from a different perspective. Nobody has walked into Ghana and said, "Would you like to become the aviation capital of West Africa? Not Ghana, but West Africa." And I need for you to understand that these people go to South Africa to get aviation training. And after we left there, doors just blew open for land, for support, for money, for this particular ministry because of what Wichita can actually provide.
And one thing, and one thing I just want to point out is they have resources. This isn't looking for financial contributions from us to build their aviation industry. They have the ability to do this. They're looking for partners who are already doing it, who can help in the development of it. So I want to make sure that I'm clear about that, that they're not looking for us to come over there and spend all of our money to build their aviation industry. We're already doing it, we already have the know-how. How can we take our experience and help them develop this? The other thing I just want to point out is the MRO. I want you guys to read this. This is a booming industry. So this market totaled over 135 billion in 2015, three-quarters of the 180 billion aircraft production markets, and 60% is for, I mean, you guys read, you can read it there. So the numbers are there. The other thing is local partnerships for aviation training. Heston College has already committed. There's land available to put an aviation school. We also have a flight safety training through Tech Strong, Wings of Wichita, it's from, all the way from pilots to maintenance folks. The whole gamut. Day two, in addition, after the Ministry of Aviation, we went to the Office of the President. So we went to our equivalent of the White House. It's called Jubilee House. And just for a second, the other thing I kind of want to point out is you don't get meetings with high-level people like this on your first trip to Africa. This should be another indication of how long this relationship has been built. You know, we weren't able to get these meetings over one night. I mean, over years and years of building these relationships is how we were able to walk into the Office of the President, how we were able to walk into the Office of the Ministry of Transportation and Aviation. To the right is Mr. Michael. He is head of the African desk. He is the advisor to the President. We had given a couple of more days, I would have met the President, but my schedule didn't allow me to stay there long enough to meet him. But I have been in contact with Michael since, and he's excited. I was able to leave him a keeper of the planes so that he could remember us and not forget who we are and what we can do. This is the Office of Transportation, David Spears. This is the guy who I really wanted to tell him about economic development and transportation and highways are the mother's milk of economic development. But his, the ring on his finger was so distracting that I just, it was, it was an interesting conversation. Next time, though, I will tell him that. So this was mainly just an introduction meeting, getting to know each other. Next, we went to the Nish Coco Factory, and I tell you, right when you walk in the door, it's like, whoosh, cocoa. I wanted some chocolate immediately. So, they are the second-largest producer of cocoa in the world. They just, were just kind of overtaken for the first spot not very long ago. But the interesting thing is we have a couple of chocolate manufacturers here in Kansas. One, Russell Stover, is located in Iowa and Abilene, Mars in Topeka, and Coco Dolce here in Wichita. So next, we're going to go to, day three was Odamasi Crobo. This is kind of in reference, you can see Accra down at the bottom, Timah where the hospital was, and then Odamasi up here in the little circle near the, it's like a mountainous area. On the way there, we saw some monkeys on the side of the road. They have, this area over in there is sort of a sacred place as far as mountain region goes. We stopped at this hospital along the way to see the sights for a little bit. So day three was all about Odamasi. And one of these, so a while back, the Sister Cities organization voted unanimously to have a sister city with Odamasi Crobo in the Lower Monja Crobo region. I just wanted to give some facts about Odamasi, some twinning investment opportunities, some companies that are there. The other thing which was kind of interesting, and I brought back a newspaper for all Commissioners, especially for Mr. Meitzner, was the, I only saw rail, one rail service there, and they had just built a rail there. And so I brought back some newspapers for each Commissioner to kind of check it out. The other health facilities that are there, and education opportunities in Odamasi. We met with, so in Ghana, there's a couple of different types of government, which is explained later, but they have a, they have two kind of types, which is, one is a modern type, which is very parliamentary-based, president, parliamentarians. And then they have the traditional type. This is, this is a country deeply rooted in traditions. And Nana Sakete II, he is sort of the king of the Odamasi Crobo kingdom. So he kind of rules, he rules the land. We had a great conversation. He talked about his support for the Queen Mother. He talked about wanting to see his kingdom do as well as he could possibly see it. And you know that you were in when he offers you some wine. So, we had a, we had a great little bottle of wine with him. It was nice.
I want to add here that this Kono, as they're known, came to Wichita and began to talk about establishing a pilot aviation school on land that's already existing as a mission aviation center. After our visit, he offered us larger land. And this is where the Heston College has agreed to go in and establish the first pilot school that will eventually turn into jet service, private jet service in West Africa. And the land that he has now offered to do this pilot school on is breathtaking, and I could not believe that he has extended the amount of land that he's willing to give toward this particular venture. So he had already been talking about this when he made his visit to Wichita before.
Next up, we met with the Queen Mothers Association. Each one of these women has a unique skill and trade opportunity. The one thing that really stuck to me was when we look at, when we talk about DCF, right? We talk about DCF here and being a broken system. Children don't get placed in a government system in this country. These queen mothers take on children who need a place to live. Their parents die for whatever reason. These queen mothers, they take care of children way, I mean, I have two kids, and half the time, I'm just like, oh my gosh, I'm pulling my hair out. Can you imagine taking care of upwards of six, seven children at a time? In addition to the hard work that they do, they provide all of their own clothing, all of their own food. I mean, it's really incredible, the craftsmanship that these women possess, and how hard-working they are. I met, I met them all. They introduced all of them. And so, it's nice to see that this queen mother has taken such an active role in being progressive and trying to move her community forward. One thing that's really interesting about the Queen Mother is one fact, last year, over 550 girls became pregnant over the Valentine's holiday. And so what happens to teen mothers? They become, they fall into a life of poverty because they're taking care of their children, not able to go to school. They're not able to do things that they need to do because they're taking care of a child. And so she has agreed to take 1,000 bites of 1,000 chocolate bars in order to kind of combat this. And I'm, this is just one of the many, many things that this queen mother has taken on to change the course of her village and her town. The third meeting we had on this day, this is the mayor of Odamasi Crobo, and it was, it was a great meeting. We, I believe, were there with having a twinning and a sister city. We have scheduled another meeting with him and our mayor to keep this conversation going about the possibility of having a sister city, the possibility of twinning, and the things that we can do to collaborate. Day four, we met with the business community. So we're talking, we're talking public, and now we're talking private. Mr. George, the guy in the blue shirt, is, I would say, he's a very, very humble man. He's very quiet. He's a carpenter by trade, and he's one of the wealthiest men in Ghana. And he is community-oriented. He is community-driven. You can tell by the things that he's done. He, actually, this is the Technical and Vocational Training Institute that he's building. It should be built, I think, within a month. It's very fast build there. But he is sort of our go-to when it comes to getting things off the ground because George knows how to do this, and he is willing to establish an office space that's for aviation education development. And he's already committed to two properties that we could use for an aviation school, for whatever we find might be appropriate in the types of partnerships that we want to develop.
Lacy, I want to add that not only is he giving us the land, he's committed to building it and supplying it with whatever we need to make sure that it is applicable to aviation technology training. And this morning, I just received pictures of other property that's already developed that he will hand to us, and he will actually put in place everything, including registration for those who want to come and be certified in aviation technology.
Here's another really kind of cool view. This is bamboo, so we use two-by-fours and we use, but they use bamboo. It's really kind of cool how they build their structures. There's so much to learn. Back to the guy who was there for surgical techniques, I mean, he talked about learning cost efficiency, right? I mean, things are, learning how to do things on less, learning just a whole other culture and how they do things. I mean, he's going over there looking for surgical techniques. Can you, can you imagine what other sort of building techniques that we could learn from? Just the opportunities of learning cross-culturally is just an added bonus to this whole endeavor. Day four, we went to, again, the Art Center at Accra, which was, I didn't have enough suitcases to bring back all the stuff that I wanted to bring, but it was just incredible. This guy's name is Samuel. Actually, we both bought some art from him. He was so gracious and took us around the whole entire art market. I learned some negotiation skills. It was, it was pretty great. He hand carves all of these things. Just the craftsmanship of the people who live in this country is unparalleled. It is so, so nice to see all of the creativity. And, I mean, my daughter is a painter, like, she paints. These people have stacks on stacks of canvases that they have created. It is so incredible to see just the output of things that they do.
And he is the largest antiquities, ancient antiquities collector in Ghana. So he's the go-to person, whoever is looking for very ancient antiquities from that country. He's the go-to person.
Day five was the Queen's Appreciation Dinner. I was so honored. The dress, actually, that I'm wearing, a young lady made it for me. I met her there. It was incredible. Anybody who's ever sewn anything knows how difficult it can be. And this young girl, she's 27 years old. years old, her name is Felicia, and she literally measured me without writing any measurements down, wrote it down, brought me back the dress. 24 hours later, no alterations. It was incredible, the type of just skill that these people have, and the craftsmanship. I just, I cannot stress that enough. From anything that they do, it's, it's just, it's really nice to see. One of the big takeaways from this was obviously hanging out with George again, and also the music that was there, but meeting Janine Davis with the USAID. She, we were able to schedule a meeting with her later that I'll talk about, but that was kind of cool to be able to meet with her. She sat in place of the U.S. Ambassador, who was not able to join us because there were like four events that they had that night. So, kind of like we have to diversify ourselves. They had to do that same, that very night. These are some of the certificates, or the plaques that we had, and I forgot mine. I was going to present it, but it's in my office. They did present Sedgwick County with the plaque. This is the band. That was so good. I just had to slip this in there because I'm a musician, and I really appreciated them. Okay, next, we're going to get kind of heavy here. Cape Coast was one of the ports for the transatlantic slave trade. And this, this happened to be this Saturday. Somebody asked me at the end of this, this tour, if I enjoyed myself. And I just can't, I can't describe that. And I haven't even been able to post about this because I just haven't been able to put into words how deeply... Look at it. Isn't it beautiful? It's a beautiful place. But the horror that went behind these walls is something that I don't think you can really grasp until you go. I just want to talk about, if you notice, this is where Cape Coast is that falls on the map. During the tour, our tour guide, who is amazing, he talked about how people were, were captured from inland, so way up top near Tomly, and even closer inland, and they made them walk 16 hours, no shoes, all the way down to the coast. And then, what they would do is they would put them in these dungeons. This one you're looking at right here is the female dungeon. And can you imagine being in this room with 150 other women, in your own urine, in your own feces, and women menstruate, right? So, we have all these things that we're dealing with. No food, just enough food to sustain your body so that you get taken away. And is it better as a woman to get selected, to be taken out of this, so you can get a bath, but then you're raped? Would you rather stay in your own feces, or would you rather be raped? Those are your two choices. And I tell you this because this is a really important part of this story. This is a very important part of the, of the culture, of the people who live here. This is the door, the cell door, that is 300 years old, that if you fought, because you know people fought, right? People didn't want to be enslaved. People didn't want to be there. They were there with lots of other people who didn't speak the same language. They were taken away from their families. They were taken away from their children, and now they're enslaved. And the people who went behind this door, they call it the cell, they never came out. No food, no light, no ventilation. They would just pull the dead bodies out when they died. This door right here is the door of no return. One thing that you don't see here is the long underground tunnel, where they would take all of these captives and march them to go through this door, to get on a ship, to be put in a, in a hole of a ship, and taken wherever. For 400 years, this culture and these people were ripped from their homeland. Can you imagine if they were, if they were there for 400 years, the type of development that they would have? They developed the world. If they could have developed their own homeland, what place would it be today? This, these children on the, on the left, the women in this, this country, the way that they carry things on their heads, by the time they're in old age, they have decompressed spines, because they carry the weight of the world, literally, on their heads. Not to mention the babies that they have strapped on their backs, and the things that they're carrying in their hands. These people are hard, hard workers. The boats over here, this is a very fishing, a very fishing port, and this is kind of where they would leave. So, day seven, we're going to lighten things up a little bit. This is a picture I received from my sister-in-law. You can tell that she's really great at baking cakes, because... But anyway, I was homesick after all of this, and the Chiefs were playing in the Super Bowl. I've been watching them for years, and I'm, I'm in Ghana. But they won, so, right? Go Chiefs. And then, day eight.
She found a restaurant, and she went and watched some of the games.
To halftime. And like, right as they were like, the, the ball was in the air, and it would like stop mid-flight. It was so frustrating. But I got to see it, and it was, it was awesome. But it didn't start until 11:30 at night. So, by the time 1 o'clock rolled around, I was sleepy. So, I'm glad to wake up to a victory. Day eight was meeting with Janine Davis at the U.S. Embassy. That place is like Fort Knox. I'm sure some folks of you have been in an embassy before. It is, it is locked up tight. The doors are very, very heavy. But the meeting was very fruitful, because she talked about her $81 million budget. She gave us some ideas about other funding streams from the federal government. She is a great connection to all those who work in Ghana at the embassy, because if we're not getting anything accomplished, we know who to go to, boots on the ground. She's very personable. She was very, very kind and considerate. And she made a point to meet with us very, very quickly. So, that was a really great connection.
She's also acts as the deputy ambassador, which means that when the ambassador is not able to make decisions to be in country, this woman heads the U.S. Embassy.
This is just some resource information, talking about the distance from Accra to Tema, to Tamile, to Cape Coast, to Odumasi, the places that we went. Just, just for a little frame of reference, Tamile is the location in which they would like to put the MRO. So, it's about an eight-hour drive, about a one-hour flight from Accra. We're just talking about the government structure. I won't bore you guys with this stuff, but this is in here for later use, for anybody who wants to kind of learn about it. So, what are the next steps, right? Everybody wants to know how this is going to benefit us. The next steps are engaging our partners, engaging our education institutions. They're all listed here. I plan to reach out to every single one on my own. The work starts now, right? Everybody wants to know what we're going to do. Well, we have to talk to people who, and, and, and explain, and show what we've discovered, and get people to really listen and pay attention to the possibilities, because there are so many possibilities. We have to engage our aviation partners. They're all...
Can you go back for a second? All of those, all of those institutions listed, except for French University and Newman, made, the Queen Mother and her entourage made a visit to them to reopen these conversations when she was here in August. And so, there is a level of commitment that has already happened. We are now moving into the second stage of, okay, so how do we make the completion? How do we really bring things together? But I just wanted to point out that all of those, except for Wichita Tech, French University, and Newman, were visited by the Queen Mother when she was here in August, and they all already have a commitment to furthering any other development and ideas for this, for this venture.
And one thing I just want to point out, I don't know if you all received Jay Golden's newsletter on February the 4th. I really just want to point out a couple of things that he mentions in his newsletter. The other fun fact about Jay Golden is he has traveled to Africa before. So, number three on his list of things that he'd like to accomplish are to grow and diversify research and our economy. Fits in perfectly with this mission. Number four is applied learning and real-world experiences. What realer experience could you get by actually going and learning how to treat mission-based services, and all the other opportunities there are? That's just one example. So, I thought that was kind of interesting, hearing from the new president of our university here, to see what his take is on things. And he also talks about entrepreneurship and innovation. So, again, aviation partners, talking to them. Agriculture, I've, I've already spoken with Lieutenant Governor Lynn Rogers, and we are going to be setting up a meeting with our Secretary of Commerce, David Tolan. I'm sure that we can get other meetings as well. But we have to engage our state partners. This is about Kansas. This is about Sedgwick County. This is about local and state. This is about diversifying the whole community, the whole state as a whole, because look what's happening right now. Are we talking about laid-off workers? We're talking about things, you know, are, and upheaval. We have to think outside the box, so we don't put ourselves in a box, and then when the box gets squished, we are dead in the water, right? We have to think about new ideas.
Lacy, once again, when the Queen Mother was here, we had a meeting with Kansas Department of Agriculture, Kansas State Agriculture brought us in. We talked about some, some process, as well as before, when, when they came earlier, we had already started talking to John Deere about tractors for the Queen Mothers, who most of them are agriculturalists, and on and on. So, we've had previous conversations. So, this is a follow-up and a follow-through.
Okay. So, again, we have to plan meetings with all stakeholders, including but not limited to our African-American Council of Elders, Wichita City Council members, TCAM. We, and, but most importantly, we need to prepare for the Ghana delegation that is coming back here in July. We need to make sure that we partner people with the right folks, and get them, this is, this is going to happen, right? We just have to help facilitate it. And then, we need to discuss and plan the next Sedgwick County delegation back to Ghana. This isn't something that's going to happen overnight. But the one thing I just really want to point out is that we, you may not see the value, and that's okay. That's okay if you don't see the value in this. But get out of the way, and let those who do see the value take the next step to make this happen. It's okay if you don't see the value, and it's okay if you don't want to help. Find something that you are passionate about and drive that home. But please don't get in our way. Please help us. This is a community that thrives on collaboration and cooperation. We all want to thrive. We all want to do our best. Please be part of the solution. Be part of this. Again, it's okay if you don't see the value. Find something you do see the value in, and focus on that. So, that's, that's my trip, guys. I'm, I feel like I have, I feel like I have really been changed. I look at the world in a different way. And I, I know that there's been a lot of scrutiny about this, and that's okay. It's okay to scrutinize. But let's make sure that we have the facts. Let's make sure that we have, we talk to all people, and we really do our due diligence, because this is a good thing for our community. This is a good thing for Sedgwick County. This is a good thing for the state of Kansas. Thank you so much. I really appreciate your willingness to participate, your support that you have provided. I think that I cannot do this alone, and I don't want to do it alone. I know that you guys have, anybody in this room, you have connections that I don't have. You have ideas of things that you might have seen here that aren't listed in this presentation. Let's discuss those, because the possibilities are endless. So, I think the biggest part is just becoming a community who wants to see each other succeed, becoming a community who wants to see people thrive, and then getting on board and helping. So, I'll get off my soapbox, because I'm so excited, and I'm so passionate about this. I didn't spend 30 hours on an airplane, travel over 10,560 miles away from my daughters. Today is my daughter's 11th birthday. It is her golden birthday, and we will be going to Chicken Max's tonight, if you guys want to come out and see us. So, happy birthday, Nova. One last thing, though, I do want to talk about, is that, yeah, we do need a clearly defined policy. I'm okay with that. I think everybody's okay with that. So, let's do it. And these are just suggestions of ways, and I hope that, I hope that you see the value in the full disclosure of this trip, because I want everybody to see, and I want everybody to join me in this, in this journey, because there's so much here. So, I'm happy, this is my last little quote, "In order to get to the next level of whatever you're doing, you must think and act in a wildly different way than you have previously. You cannot get to the next phase of a project without grander mindset, more acceleration, and extra horsepower." So, are you guys ready to turn up the speed?
Here's my $20.
Oh, thank you.
I've been to Africa twice, the Kenyan twice.
See this? You see it's coming from you? You can tell them later.
We need to chip in, guys.
Yeah.
I can't stop.
You know, it's, it's been interesting about the press, which to me is so low synergy. When we talk about what we discover, and I just want to say thank you to my commissioner, who represents my district, and say that she answered the call from her constituents. I am a constituent. The Council of Elders over here are her constituents, who said, "Lacy, thank you. Can you please go and represent us, and bring forward some possibilities for your constituents called Northeast Wichita?" So, I just want to let you know that it was far more powerful with you with me and present to represent my district called Cedric County. And if you guys don't know, the full name of the Council of Elders is actually the Cedric County African-American Council of Elders, who have led this for some time now. And I want you to know that we are very proud of how our commissioner stood for us, took this journey, and just blew them completely away, and sold Cedric County in Ghana, West Africa. So, I would like to applaud her in her hard work and diligence.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. That's, it was very helpful to, to have this information, and, and for us, and, and for everybody, for the public. And thanks for a lot of the public that's here to either participate or witness. So, any questions or comments from fellow commissioners? Okay. Well, thank you again, Lacy. So, all right. And welcome back. Okay.
With that, Glenda.
Tom, next, next item.
Now move on to
Yes.
Board appointments. And while Glenda's getting the microphone, as you all know, we crafted new policy at the, at the end of last year regarding board appointments. And one component of selecting new board members for our advisory boards is to have commission in a staff meeting before it actually becomes resolution, to look at applicants and, and hear recommendations from whoever the person is that is appointing to the board. So, in this case, it's Glenda for Corrections Board. And so, with that, I'll let her talk about her Phils.
Good morning, Glenda.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners, Chair, County Managers, and Leaders. So, what I want to talk to you this morning about is the Community Corrections Advisory Board. It's about appointments. We had, so I just want to kind of do a quick overview. It's a 13-member board. It's appointed by four county commissioners, three city council, one chief... board. It's appointed by four county commissioners, three city council, one chief of police or designee, a judicial representative, the sheriff, one sheriff person, an educational representative, one court services, and one district attorney. There are at least two members of the board has to be a representative of ethnic minorities, and no more than two-thirds of the members of each board shall be members of the same gender. So we have statute requirements that talk to us about that makeup of that membership for the board. I have two reappointments. Well, they're they expired. One was for Ignacio Ayala, and his appointment expired on 9/1819. And we've just continued his appointment to the board until we had a policy or how we figured out how this is going to happen. And then the other one was for an educational representative, Dr. Michael Burser. His appointment expired, actually, on 9/519. And then I have a county commission appointment that's needed. It's just a general representation. So one of the things we did is I, we opened the application process up to have people apply for those positions. The two current members that were already, they had to apply. And then I had seven other people apply. Five of those applicants I met with in an application process, two of the current board members, and then two at the last minute decided they did not want to be on the board. So my recommendation today is to have a reappointment of Ignacio Ayala. He has been on the board since 9/915. He is a licensed master social worker and retired firefighter. He has been a very active board member and attends, as a matter of fact, he is, has a perfect attendance on the board. He contributes to the meetings. He was our vice chair last year. And so I would highly recommend we reappoint him. The other reappointment that I'd like to continue with is Dr. Michael Burser. He works for WSU in the Criminal Justice Department. He's been on the board since 9/617. He has great attendance. He's an active board member right now. He is the vice chair, was appointed by the committee to be a vice chair. He fits our educational requirement, and he brings to the board his knowledge of the criminal justice system, which is very vital in what we are doing in the adult world. Michael has done a lot of work with the Wichita P.D., and I would like to continue that appointment. The recommendation that I have that would be new is for LaShonda Garns. LaShonda is, works at WSU as a community development and strategic planning person. She was a fabulous interview. What surprised me the most is she walked in and she had my strategic plan in my hand. So she had really researched her application to the board, wants to be on the board. She was very enthusiastic. LaShonda brings with her a gender balance that we need as a female and ethnic person. And I highly, highly recommend that we appoint her. The other people that applied to the board, they were all equally good applicants. But like I said, we have a balance that we need to maintain. We have an educational requirement. I'm going to have another opening that's going to come up in March that I'm going to need to fill. I have a, and Michael, Mark Orr is currently on there, and he's a defense counsel right now. But I did have other people that could equally fill the role. And we will go through that process that's been lined out for us. And I'll bring that one forward probably sometime at the end of next month. So so for right now, I just would like to reappoint Ignacio Ayala and Dr. Michael Burser and LaShonda Garns.
Okay, it's any questions, comments?
Also, thank you very much, Glenda. I completely support that. I think LaShonda's fantastic. Chairman Meiser and I worked with her over at the city, have a lot of faith in her. And your input is also extremely valuable. And yeah, I appreciate this new process and the way.
I do, too.
But but I think I've made it very clear that I'm, I am absolutely confident in your decision-making and your leadership with corrections. You do an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate Commissioner Lacy, too, bringing this forward. The process was a little, it wasn't muddy, but it was not as transparent. And it didn't give people in the opportunity in the community to see, okay, there's a board position that's available. Could I apply for that? And what would that process look like? So I got to meet some very interesting people that had some very interesting commitments that they wanted to make. Like I said, there weren't any of them that I would not appoint to the board. But the fact of the matter is, there's only three seats. So you have to narrow it down to the the top ones that you think will bring their interest really into the Community Corrections arena. Because this is, this is a very active board. We actually make decisions on how we spend money, how we move forward. And they do a lot of work, and they meet every month. So I am very committed to my board members showing up every month. It's, you know, 8 to 9 in the morning, and they do a great job doing that. So.
I'm interested. It's also curious. So you interviewed five or whatever. But but as a result of interviews and them, a couple of them learning about what the job would entail, then they, then they said that they were not.
Two of them backed out before the actual interview, but the others all very interested.
Because we have other boards that we think we appoint somebody, and then they get into the position because they haven't really backgrounded into it.
They haven't really thought about it, or hadn't really had a conversation about what that really means.
Right.
What kind of commitment that is to time. And so I think this has really helped that process.
Good. Well, so we.
And Chairman, this is, this is exactly this point in the process. This is for discussion and questions and comments from commissioners. You'll vote on this formally by.
It'll be on an agenda item, right?
In next week, at the 19th meeting.
Commissioner Hal.
Thank you, Chairman. Just want to clarify, since this is kind of a new process, what was the, what was the process that was used to advertise this to the community so they knew, they knew there was an opportunity for this position?
I don't know that there was. Well, on this, on the new process, we did. On the new process. In the past, I don't know that there was. But we did put it in through communications. We did put that out there. So it was on our website.
The reason I'm asking is I did have someone reach out to me. They wanted to apply for this, and I couldn't find where it was. I couldn't steer them in the right direction. So I don't know what, you know, what, where they should have gone to find the information. They heard about it through someone. I don't, I have no idea. I don't even know who it was and how it called me. But I guess, trying to be inclusive, I'd like to make sure that everybody had an opportunity to get our attention. And finally, I don't, I don't really know LaShonda. I don't know who else applied. I have no knowledge of any of them. But I'm, I'm curious about her connection to corrections. It makes her, you know, makes her qualified to serve on this board. Because I don't, again, I don't know her at all. I'm just curious, what's her background that would give her, if you will, expertise on this, on this particular board?
And I don't know that it's necessarily that she had expertise about community corrections. But the enthusiasm and ideas about connecting people and community and, and being excited about the idea that adults could change and actually make changes. She was, I believe, very involved in the strategic plan. She, her questions were very specific about my strategic plan, which means, to me, she read it. And, and that was important to me because I wanted to make sure that whoever we were, I was appointing or asking, recommending to appoint, really understood where we were going in our, in our community corrections arena.
I appreciate your, I appreciate your evaluation on the candidates. I thought the process would be that we would be, we would have a chance to see the applications, and we'd be able, you know, read about the backgrounds and the, and, because I think there's an opportunity for them to to fill any, you know, why I, why I'd like to serve on this board, what makes me, you know, interesting, you know, in terms of your intention to put me on this particular board. Why, why would I have that connection? I thought the commissioners were going to have a chance to, if you will, read through the different applicants. So we would understand, you know, from our own perspective, that this was, you know, the best choice, for example. And I have no knowledge of any of the candidates. It's not about that. I'm just curious about the process. Thank you.
Commissioner Hal Van Williams with Communications. It was, the position was posted on social media, and we can send you an email.
Okay, I appreciate social media. I don't think that's the right process we ought to be following.
But I think it was also on E-line as well, and it was posted as well. Not just social media.
I would like, my preference would be it would be listed on our boards page, the opportunities for open positions coming up, or open positions. And people could go to our boards page, and they could find opportunities for them to, to, you know, to understand opportunities for each person that wants to serve. But anyway.
So we, we are going to implement a product. That demonstration is, we have it scheduled for our staff. It's not within the next week. But we will roll that in front of you so you can see the actual page before we implement it. But that is, the plan is to put that out on E-line and make it accessible.
With all due respect, I follow the Sedgwick County's social, social media posts pretty closely, and I didn't see it. So again, we're not hitting a very big, very big audience because the algorithms that Facebook uses or whoever uses, it's not like everybody's going to see this on that platform, and it gets buried pretty quickly. So it's not the, maybe the best way to do this. It ought to be more of a go-to place. People could go, if someone says, "I want to serve on a board," we can direct them to, if you will, a collector, collector location. They could see all the opportunities for anything that might be coming open. So I just, we can do, we can do better on this part. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I want to take just a little bit different track than Commissioner Hal did. I do not believe that the commission needs to micromanage our staff. And we rely on the staff to take a look at who the best candidates are that are going to fit their position. And they know their positions that need to be filled much better than we do. I don't have a problem if a commissioner wants to see who all the applicants are. But as far as us getting involved in the decision-making process, we're the ones that approve what the staff selects for us. We have a very great staff that I'm very proud of. I say that every time I talk. And I want to make sure that they understand that their job is to to bring us recommendations. Our job is not to micromanage. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, just a final comment. I think this is what we talked about when we talked about our, our policy. I think this was discussed at the bench. And again, it's not that I don't trust you. I understand, I trust you. You're an excellent director, and I love what you do for our community. It's not about trust. We have to vote on this. I want to vote from a position of personal knowledge. And I felt like I have, I have a right to do some due diligence before I cast my vote. So that's all this is. I'm not trying to micromanage. I just think that, right now, I know nothing about the candidates. I only have one name. I know that you, you're endorsing that person for this position. I would love to trust you. But I just think, since we're going to have to vote on this, what's my baseline for voting if I don't know anything about any of the candidates? I just think it's a process issue. Thank you.
And I'm happy to share those with you. I, I have them. I have all the applica, all the applications. I get those from Lisa and Carol. They send those to me. So they're available. And then I scheduled an interview with each one of them. So I have my notes from those meetings. And so it was really very, very transparent. But, you know, we, we're just trying a new process out. And I think that if we're, we need to get more information out there, that's great. I don't remember ever having this many people apply for a advisory board role. And so I feel, felt, when I had nine people, that was a great, you know, to choose from, because I've never had more than one or two. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm open. And I'm going to be in front of you next month to talk about the next vacancy that I have. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I think that's all we had. Mike, did you have anything you wanted to bring up legislatively or?
I mean, I can certainly do it. Mike Papun, County Counselor. I can certainly present legislative issues tomorrow during the meeting. I don't think it'll be anywhere close to as lengthy as it was last week. And anything I'd be doing today would be a repeat tomorrow, except that I think we'll have some bill numbers for you tomorrow that I don't have today. So.
Okay, probably be a more thorough, a complete update tomorrow. Okay. Okay. Anybody, anybody else from staff that are electeds want to say anything? Kelly, you want to say anything? Okay. All right. Okay. Well, thank you, everybody, for this morning, and have a good day.